We are ready to move on to our first item, which is the one-to-one iPad initiative survey. And I believe Mr. Kudre has got a cadre of presenters, maybe?
Yes, it's posse.
So before we start, I'm going to just say a quick thank you. The survey was monstrous. It was far bigger than anything we've done before. It caused me a few sleepy nights, but the, or sleepless nights, but the kids behind me and their classmates basically did an amazing job. Also, it involved all the language arts teachers from grade 6 through 12 in El Paso. I want to point that out. And we hit the exact wrong time of year to bother them. It's the heart of MCA's, field trips, early out for sports. And they really came through for us, and I appreciate that. Also, thank you to the board and Mr. Hillman for this really unique valuable opportunity. And I appreciate the ability to do this for you all. And I'll turn it over to my students, and they'll tell you what they need to tell you. Oh, you know what? I gotta introduce these folks. I'm sorry. I forgot to type the data. So down here is Millie Chaden. There's Elizabeth Pritchard is right behind me, and there's you well. We've got Cassidy Nord right here. She's on. James Rowley, and Eric Swanson, Emily Swanson, Emily Alberto, and Eric Mansager. Emily and Eric are juniors, the rest are all seniors. And you'll see them again Sunday.
Sunday.
Well, our purpose in the three surveys was to measure the district goal of substitution. And we also decided to take a look at distractions and also the return on the investment and people's general satisfaction with the iPads. We went through a process of three different surveys, looking at asking teachers, parents, and students what they all thought of the iPads. We're presenting the results of these three surveys along with our recommendations to the school board so that you can have quality information to work off of in making decisions regarding future iPad plans. We, for parents, we specifically asked teachers about how beneficial the iPads were in a home environment. And we looked at the visible effects that the iPads had on their children, whether it be negative things such as games or positive things such as grades. And we also asked about Wi-Fi issues. For students, we specifically asked about accessibility, distractions, and substitutions. And for teachers, we also asked about substitutions such as assignments, textbooks, or quizzes and tests, and also distractions and Wi-Fi issues. For parents, we asked with the variety of days and times so that we get a representative sample, because if we only asked during, called during the school day, we would be missing out on parents who worked during the day. And for students, we specifically surveyed them during their language arts class because they all have a language arts class. And for teachers, we tried, or we all tried at different times and days to go up to each teacher to ask them to take the survey. And we, we asked them. Oh, this is, um, this is top secret, so we're not allowed. I would like to point out that the artwork on this slide is done by Louisa Lawler, one of our classmates.
All right. And how we surveyed the parents is we each received 56 numbers on a list in two columns. And I chose six random numbers using a calculator and called each of those numbers until I received three responses. And I called them during my class time, and then also after school when I get home, and then also after dinner. And if we didn't receive response for those three calls, then we'd recalculate a new list of six numbers and try again using the calculator.
Okay, so we can't survey everyone. That'd be too time-consuming and pretty expensive. So instead, we generated a sample. And the sample may not be representative of an entire population. Unpredicted biases could influence it. Like, for example, seniors who list themselves as their own emergency contacts could not be included. So this is where confidence interval comes in. Our confidence intervals, we use a 95% confidence. So the confidence intervals show a range where the actual value, if the entire population would serve it, or if the entire population was surveyed, would fall. So if, how do you look at this? Okay, so if you look at this one right here, or the green chunk, that's the iPad access for, that the parents answered. So if we surveyed the entire parent body, the actual value of Wi-Fi access via iPad would be between 91 and 98%.
Now, the first two questions we asked of the teacher were of, sorry, asked of the parents, I should say, were of whether students had access to internet at home. First question was whether students had access to internet at home with an iPad. And 95% of parents responded yes, their students do have access to internet. 92% of parents responded that their students had access to internet at home through a home computer. The next set of questions was whether parents thought they had saved money this year on school supplies. And 42%, 43% more closely, parents said that they, yes, had saved money this year on school supplies. And 60% of parents believed that they would save money on the future school supplies. Now, these are just ranges of numbers, because with our confidence interval, we had to survey a population. And we were left with a margin of error of almost 8%, which means the 61% of parents who would save in the future varies more closely between plus or minus 8% over that range. And the third set of questions is whether students were impacted by the iPads. 72% of parents said that yes, their students were positively impacted educationally by the iPads. And 64% of parents said that yes, their students were positively affected organizationally by the iPads.
The last question we had was, do you have any additional comments you'd like to share? And open-ended. So out of the comments, you see how many people felt, or had positive, negative, neutral comments. Out of the positive comments, 24 felt it had a dramatically improved their students' education. And eight hope to see more use in the future, and we're glad it finally happened. Out of the negative comments, 18 parents wished that the iPad was easier to use, and they also wished it was easier for them to control their students' usage, or at least monitor it better. 14 people commented on distractions and gaming that happens both at home at school. And seven other parents thought it made learning harder for their students. And out of the neutral comments, four noted organization issues, both to the students and with some of the teachers. Three people thought they're all right, but thought they were just kind of unnecessary. And two people felt that the internet connection wasn't available enough.
The second survey that we did was the student survey. And again, Louisa Lawler did this artwork for us. Teachers emailed Mr. Kudre the number of students in each of their language arts class. And then we responded to those emails with a randomly generated list of numbers dependent on how many students were in their list. So if we generated, for this class size of 10, if we generated numbers 2 and 7, then the teacher would have the students scan the QR code with their iPad. And it would take them to a survey that looks like this.
Okay, and then I worked strictly with, like, I just condensed and gathered all of the number data. So sorry if I bore you with too many numbers. Okay, so then the first thing that I did was, how many? We asked the students how many of them have Wi-Fi either at home through a computer or through their iPad. And then we found that 94% of the students had access to internet at home through their iPad, while 88% had access at home through a computer. And then for the use of schoolwork, so we asked them, you know, as you can see right, you know, there. So in a typical school week, how many days per week do you use your iPad for schoolwork at school? And then we found that 83% of them use them every day during a regular school week. And then how many of them, on the contrary, use them for schoolwork at home? We found that 79% of them use them three, four, and five days. We just condensed this group right here. And then for the effect of the iPad, we asked them how it impacted their organization and their overall educational impact. And then we found that 70% of students felt that the iPads had made for positive organization for schoolwork, while 40, sorry, 48% feel that made a positive educational impact. And then for engagement in class, which will later lead into like games and gaming policy that we'll touch on a little bit later, we found that people, that 75% of students felt that they were more or just as likely to be engaged in class since the iPad. So those are shown right here. And then for distraction in class, we found that 41% of students felt that they frequently or sometimes, right here, feel that they are often distracted and not on topic by misuse of their selves, of themselves. And then we found that 51% of students feel that they are distracted by others' misuse of the iPad. And then for non-school-related apps, we asked them, when using your iPad in school, how often do you use non-related school apps, non-school-related apps? And then we found that 76% of students sometimes or frequently use non-school-related apps in school, whether it's in class or they're not on topic or what it is. And then for gaming policy, which again, kind of relates back to the last one, we asked them if they feel they should be more strict, less strict, or the current practice is just fine. And we found that 52% of students feel that the gaming policy could be more strict or more specifically, more strict for those who are very easily distracted. So just combine those two right there.
All right. As part of our measuring substitution, we asked this about the textbooks. And so we found out how many students used textbooks. And then out of the textbooks they used, how many were online textbooks? We found a little more than half, or 57% of the textbooks students used were available online. And we also went over the student comments, the comments. About 190 roughly total students were supplied. And out of those 190, only 38 left comments. And out of those comments, from the negative ones, two people thought they did like specific things, but admitted overall they did think there were some other benefits with the iPad. One person noted health concerns such as like getting headaches or like their eyes sort of hurting after long usage. And 13 noted distractions such as gaming in class. Of the neutral comments, five students wanted more access to apps, and three wish there's more instruction, instruction for themselves and the teachers on how to use the iPads.
The final survey that we did was of the teachers. And again, the artwork is done by Louisa Lawler. So each student had a couple teachers either at the high school or the middle school to go to with their iPad, either before, during, or after school to give, to have them scan a QR code like this one to take the survey. And this is what the QR code took them to.
So the total number of population of teachers we were trying to survey was 132, 61 from the middle school and 71 from the high school. Unfortunately, we could only get 113. For me, when I was going out to try to talk to them, one of my teachers had practice every day after school, so I couldn't go get him because I have a first hour. And again, it's very difficult to complete a census because they're not always there and not everyone wants to take it. And also, if we were to create a sample, the sample would need to be less than 10% of the population, and that would be about 13 teachers. So it wouldn't have been very useful. It shows that teachers are, it's very clear that teachers have access to Wi-Fi at home through computers and their iPads. This graph is asking how often, or it was asking the teachers, how often do you use the following with your students via SchoolGee or other online methods? Dark green signifies frequently, light green sometimes, orange rarely, and red never. The teachers answered, what, to post assignments, 85% of them use it frequently or sometimes, to send messages, 82%. Message students, 65%. Collect student work, 45%. And then web-based activities, 57%. This graph shows that the number of teachers feeling that, or felt like the iPad had a positive impact on organization was around the same amount as those who feel there's a negative or no impact. This graph shows that the number of teachers felt that the iPad had a positive impact on organization. Oh, oops. Yeah, this one felt that the iPad had a more negative or neutral impact rather than positive on engagement in class. This one is regarding distractions specifically. 82% of teachers felt that the iPads were a distraction to their classroom. And there were additional comments specific to the distraction and engagement questions. Eight teachers commented that they strongly agree that the iPads were a distraction and wanted stronger rules. There are 17 comments regarding situational, like it depends on the student, or it can occasionally be distracting. There were four comments that said it was not distracting because the teacher does not allow the students to let the iPad be a distraction. And then there's three other just not very relevant ones. Okay, so we asked the teachers a question regarding game use. Nope. Regarding, oh, the slide disappeared. Okay, so we asked about game usage. And 80% believed that the district needs to be more strict on game usage because it's becoming a distraction for students. But 80% sounds bad, but the iPads have, on the other hand, been proven to be very useful academically. So we gave the teachers a list of 20 apps that are available on the iPad, distributed by the district. And we had them rank their top five apps most often they use in their classes, so them directing their students to use these apps. And 80% sometimes or consistently use SchoolGee every day, followed by Notability, Safari, iBook, and Google Drive. The impact of iPads, 80% of teachers, or 50% of teachers had thought that the iPads were a positive impact on their ability to teach, while less than 15% believed that there was a negative impact. So this is overall very good impact for the teachers and their teaching abilities. So for the open-ended comments that we left teachers to comment on at the end, we got 29 responses out of 112 teachers that were surveyed, five of which were positive. And four teachers were overall happy and grateful for the iPads. One was content for now, but will be happier in the future when more kinks have been worked out. 10 had negative comments, three of which were regarding games and the distraction from those games. Six were commenting on other distractions and misuse regarding the iPads, not necessarily games. One wants more consequences established for misuse, so less students get distracted. 14 teachers had neutral comments, five of which were regarding teacher preparation and consistency of use, highlighting the fact that a lot of teachers use them very consistently while some don't. So it's just kind of a miscommunication for students, and that makes it harder for them. Five brought up suggestions for the teachers regarding iPads. Two of the comments say that we should look at the effect of what the iPads have on struggling students, mostly distraction-wise. And two comments were considered other because they didn't really fall into a category.
All right, so I'm going back to those three main goals we wanted to assess. Through these surveys, we found distractions aren't issue.
And that's reflected in three-fourths of the students sometimes or frequently use non-school-related apps.
Which is a frustrating teachers, which, because 80% felt they were a distraction for students.
In addition to that, 17 out of 41 of the negative parent comments involved distractions.
And 52% of students said that we should be more strict about the use of games.
Students and teachers are both satisfied with the iPads. And parents are in general neutral about the iPads, but that's probably just because they didn't receive a free iPad themselves.
Most parent comments.
Was that a statistical comment?
Most parents expressed concern over their lack of involvement with the iPads. So an idea would just be have parents get more involved with iPads just because they don't really understand, I guess, what their students are doing with them.
It seems too soon to tell whether we have return on financial investments on the iPads, but less than half of parents said that they saved money this year, but a lot of them are hopeful to save money in the future.
Teachers felt that it was helpful for both their teaching and organization, but not as much for their students.
And very few teachers thought the iPads had a negative effect on their ability to teach.
And 70% of students thought the iPads had a positive organizational impact, but only half claimed that they had a positive educational experience. And then with substitution, we should continue to encourage teachers to substitute more in new ways since they mostly use the iPad for posting assignment information and sending documents. So perhaps they could try collecting assignments. And then if apps develop, perhaps quizzes as well, although there have been some test security issues, which would be another thing to look into more.
More than half of the textbooks we aim to use are available on the iPads.
And over three-fourths of students reported using iPads for schoolwork at least three days or more at home and in school.
So overall, it seems we need to look into distractions. And most people feel neutral or satisfied with the iPads. And substitution went well, but we hope to continue to make more innovative use for the iPads.
That's it? That was our conclusion? If you guys want to stand up, I'm sure everyone I have a question under the roof.
Word members question?
Eric's comment about the free iPad is not part of our research.
No statistical significance.
Significant margin of error.
Rob?
Hi, thank you very much. That was really interesting, and you did a great job of presenting it. I'm just wondering about, with the use of the iPads, teachers, there's not a consistent usage of it from teacher to teacher. And I'm wondering if there was any feedback on that aspect of it, that it made it confusing because some teacher uses it in one way and another uses it, and there's not a consistent expectation from the teaching aspect?
I think mostly the issue is that, like, students get confused because some teachers use it a lot and expect a lot, like, everything technologically. And some teachers only expect paper homework. So then I think students get confused because maybe, I don't know, there's just like a disconnect, and teachers think that there needs to be more, like, consistent usage, I guess.
Like, for example, from personal experiences, I can say, I'm used to like 90% of my teachers folks saying like all their assignments in SchoolGee. And there's like one or two who never would. And so occasionally I forget, because like, oh, I checked SchoolGee, no, it's not. Awesome, good. Like, oh, crap, there's something, be like, wow.
And also, the goal for this year was substitution. And there's also several more steps to iPad usage. But this year, the primary goal was for each teacher to substitute at least one aspect of their class. So not all teachers did the same thing.
And I think another aspect of teachers getting on the right, on the same track with each other is not necessarily their fault, but the lack of the offering of textbooks via iPad from companies because some classes, they can't offer it because it's not available. So I think that's what they're talking about, too, is not, some classes, like half classes have to be real textbooks because that's all that's offered, while others have both or just strictly via the iPad.
Just another thing, just from personal experiences, that I found that my older teachers like never use any of the iPad, everything is on paper. But a lot of the younger, newer ones, you know, do. So, I mean, that is something to keep in mind.
Other questions? Julie?
I have a question. First of all, thank you. I think you guys did a great job. And I love to hear your personal stories, too, about your own, your own experiences as well as what you surveyed. I had a question. Were there any problems or challenges to the survey process that you didn't anticipate? And how did you overcome that?
I think Mr. Kudre tried to repair us for the issues of a census. But again, we just did not expect how difficult it would be just to get in touch with all the teachers or to have cooperative teachers in terms of taking the survey. And then, of course, with students just being gone all the time for field trips and different activities and all the rain cancellations and stuff, it was really difficult to get those students in the language arts classes to take the surveys as well.
Something about student surveys is that there's some data that we got, which I don't think was on here, but it was just like really, like, students nev, there's a couple students who had never, or they said they never used SchoolGee during school time, which isn't really possible. So I think some kids didn't take the student survey seriously and might have just jokingly put down incorrect answers.
I did lose a lot of sleep, and I shared that with them when all things started going wrong with the drafting down on teachers and getting the students and stuff. It really became, we, we quite obviously hit the worst time of year to do this. So next period, my notes, it'll say, or Mr. Bolle, hold still, continue something like this. We're gonna start this earlier because we hit the two weeks when the weather sort of cleared a little bit. So then every sport had makeup games, and everybody was gone for, it was, it was insane.
I think we matched the art of plan B, C, D.
They did a great job. When you consider all, they, they had to go to each teacher. They had to go to middle school. And, you know, we didn't email ahead and say, I gave an email saying, hey, the kids will be around and so on, but not like a specific time. So, you know, sometimes as a senior, maybe two minutes before the bell ring seems like a good idea to approach a teacher with a survey, but it's not. So we had a few of those, and just, you know, and a few of where, like, people would just go there and the teacher was like gone for, because they coached, and they were gone after school, and the student didn't have, you know, that, that first hour available. So that's why we missed a couple of those. But I, I think overall, it went, went pretty well. We did have a couple of really tough phone calls that happened early on. And we'll just kind of keep, keep secret, but yeah, it was, it was interesting, I'd say.
Carrie?
I didn't completely understand the confidence rankings at the beginning. Is the confidence that you had in your results the same for the teachers, the teacher survey and the parent survey and the student survey? Or does it vary question by question? Or can you just explain that a little more to me?
Okay, so, because we couldn't get a census, a lot of the answers were just the results that we got from the survey. But then we were explaining that these maybe are not the set results. They are rather the results from the survey. And there's biases that may or may not have been included, so.
So the confidence interval was constant for the student and teacher ones? And that's at 95%? So we're 95% sure it was somewhere within the margin of error?
Student and parent ones.
Teachers, because it was an attempted census, those were the exact percentages. And then parents and students, that was our 95% confidence, where it could have been in some range of that number we gave you.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt?
I just have to tell you, I'm truly jailed and excited tonight because I just think.
I just have to tell you, I'm truly jazzed and excited tonight because I just think it's awesome that we've got kids evaluating this program that we spend a lot of time playing together, poor kids. So I'm just over the roof excited for you, you did a great job. I had a chance to speak to these guys early on and engage with them about the kinds of questions they were gonna ask. I, I think you did a marvelous job. I think a great piece is that I've been living this all year, listening to people, and nothing that you have said shocked, you know, in terms of, these are things that I've heard, you know, face to face, that really kind of triangulate some of the other piece. The question that I have is your ability to do any kind of disaggregation of the data of the middle school versus the high school and as a person who's gonna be involved with reviewing some of the policies and procedures that we used this year, what I find really interesting, especially about the gaming data, the eighty percent of people who think we need stricter restrictions, we often hear the solution at the high school, we want, what is the solution at the high school, what are the schools, middle school mode, right? And yet with eighty percent of people responding to that, that tells me that the middle school teachers, even with middle school mode, believe that there is an issue there as well. So would there be a way, obviously not, but can you help disaggregate that data and share that with us, looking at the middle school versus the high school?
Well, the student data, the student data actually is automatically disaggregated. All of the distraction pieces were asked of high schoolers. So, and, and, and other than that, yes, I have paid my monthly fee for Survey Monkey and all of the things I could share with you.
I just think that would be very interesting, is many people think the solution is middle school mode, yet what that data indicates to me is that even people in middle school mode might think there's an issue there. And so then we get into talking about filtering and as we all know, you've all had some kind of negative aspect with our school filter. So that's just the question of what letters do we press and what other problems do they cause in terms of that piece? So if we could talk about that, then you did a wonderful job and I think your data is outstanding. You did a great job. Great questions, great techniques, well done.
Oh, and just as a side note, the students generated all the questions and some of, some of the days we would sit there as a full class during fifth period, thirty kids, the screen up and they would have a conversation and I would take notes and then they pair their questions down and I'd take that to seventh period and they'd work on it further. So all of the, all of the questions came from them. I gave the goals, you know, I, we, I had Matt come in and talk about the SAMR model and what our goal was as a district for the year. And then we kind of took off from there and the themes kind of came about from where the students came from, so. I almost forgot about that.
So I had, I had one more question that I thought of when Matt was talking was, you were saying that you didn't think there was any surprises for you. I was curious, you all have had your own experiences, did anything in the data surprise you?
The sheer level of distractions, like, I get distracted sometimes, but I don't think that eighty percent felt, well, I don't know if those teachers or not, but like, I didn't realize how big of a problem it was for other people, so.
And I worked on, you know, the question of like, are you distracted by your own use versus other students' use? And there was, you know, a much higher percentage that said that, you know, other people who were more distracted. Yeah, exactly. It's not me, it's that, so, I thought that that was pretty interesting.
I did a trial run of those two questions with one of my honors javertory course and there was nobody who said they were distracted themselves and I believe it was about eighty percent who had been distracted by others, which I thought was shocking. That was, that's not any data that you should throw into the mix, it was like, whoa, that's kind of like surprising, so.
They were distracted by others or they thought others were being distracted?
They were distracted by others' use, you know, like if they saw someone was off-task, you know, in a class of thirty, if you got the one person in the right spot that's off-task and happens to be able to see it, but, you know, if, I, my personal opinion on that is there's some staff development that could happen that where people could, you know, surround that problem together and find out what it could be and connect from lots of things.
So when you work with, with development of the questions, how do you process so that words like distraction have a clear enough definition that you're going to get, you're going to get an answer that really reflects, you know, I mean, for one person, distraction might be, it's driving me crazy and I can't do anything. For somebody else, it's, well, you're ICs over there playing a game, but I'm doing my thing. Do you struggle at all at times with trying to create the actual questions?
We did that perfectly and I think that's one of the things, you know, we're, as amazing as, as these two groups are, I really do believe that they're great people and they've worked hard all year. The fact is, we're high school students and I'm not as, you know, I don't have a, a master's in statistics or anything like that. That, that will be like part of the next step, because I think it would be a good follow-up. We actually have some resources in our department who have relatives who've worked in that field. Actually, Mr. Eddie's sister, I believe it is, works for a company and her job is to do exactly what you just described, for a large company. So I think that would be part of what we need to do. We did, I, I tested on a few of my classes and a few other classes and the main thing we looked for were, you know, with these guys, is it obviously biased? And we really worked at that part of trying not to push them to it was the answer, but as far as the semantics that you're talking about, we didn't, we didn't get too far into that. You know, outside of when I gave them, if kids, the kids in my classes that I gave to, if, for the samples, if they were confused by the questions that I threw back at these guys, we rewrote them that way.
So I guess finally, for you guys, positive experience, something that you think is gonna be usable outside of the experience of doing this class? Mr. Kudry, do you want to cover yours?
I will, yeah.
Just thoughts and feelings? Because obviously we've been doing this now for several years with, with several different projects. Personally, I think it's a very powerful piece. I just wonder, how are you guys feeling about this? Is this something that, that you could see a use for outside of your experience you had in the past?
Well, I know for me personally, it's really like positively affected my organization and some of the data, but I've also noticed that I completely lost my train of thought. Okay, it was, so like online, you know, I mean, I'm a seventeen-year-old senior in high school, I mean, I do sometimes, sometimes wait until the night before something's due. So like for my psych journals, you know, the textbooks online, which I found really, I really liked that it was online, but it would sometimes like lock you out of the thing and then you can't log on and it says like, you know, something like log back in twenty-four hours and I'm like, well, I don't have twenty-four hours. And I talked to Mr. Hillman about this when he came into our class and then he said that it was something probably more with the textbook company, that something was just a miss there, but that was something that was rather frustrating. But again, part of it is my fault for waiting.
Okay, so for me, it was very, very, very positive. I love the iPads. It like, I could keep all my homework on there, all my planners, just everything, and I could cruise the web when I got home. And on top of that, the apps that the school buys, like Notability, when we return the iPad, they're still on our account. So next year when I go to college, well, I'm not going to college next year, I'm being an exchange student, but the year after that, when I go to college, I'll have Notability. So if I do decide to get an iPad over a laptop, I'll be able to take notes on Notability instead of having to sort through something else.
I actually have a varying experience with these iPads. My sister was not, I haven't heard her say something negative about this, but it's been an extreme distraction for me this year. And I'm not a very organized person and it's been hard to keep myself in several places at once, whether it being a planner that I don't check often, or Notability, or Schoology that I don't check often. It was harder, I feel, by having the iPads, it stretched me out at this point to, it took the already hard workload I had and it became a distraction as well as a confusing thing, the iPads. And then something I would like to address with the keyboards on the iPads, I know many students I've seen with Bluetooth keyboards that are rather expensive, but will streamline the iPads a lot, but I've always found it easier to write than use the keyboards that come on the surface of the iPad. And it's just been, just one more little issue that tweaks me about the iPads.
Just to piggyback on Eric, like with the other extras, like the styluses and the keyboards and like the wireless, you know, mice, mouse, mice that come with it. I don't know if it's different for computers, but anyway, so I found that, that like mainly like the students that can afford those extra things have really positively, you know, benefited from it, but like, I mean, well, I know like for me, like, I was gonna buy a stylus, but then I found out and it was, I mean, it was only fifteen bucks, but I'm like, I'm not spending fifteen bucks on a stylus, you know, and then, so I mean, I just didn't get one. And I mean, like, it's fine, but it, you know, it just would have helped if like those extra things, you know, you know what I mean? That does kind of like negatively hit the kids that can't necessarily afford all of those other things.
I understood your question as what my thoughts on this process was and...
Elizabeth, you, you got to the question I was looking for.
Okay.
Is, did the process that you went through?
Yeah.
In terms of your statistics class, doing a project like this in comparison to reading in your textbook about how people use statistics to solve problems? What do you see as the impact of using this process as opposed to a more traditional instruction?
Don't get me wrong, Mr. Kudry, you're lucky, you were very invigorating all year, but I thought that this whole process of doing like student to parent to teacher to other student contact was really insightful, I guess, and it really, everything was group work pretty much. Ninety-five percent of it was group work, so I know in college, a lot of projects are group projects, so it really taught me how to communicate with my group and like not, obviously I love all these people and everything, but they're not my best friends, so it had, it taught me to really like communicate with people that I'm not especially close with. And especially Google Drive was really helpful because everything, all of our stuff was in one place and you could see everything that everyone was doing, so that was really helpful. And yeah, so group work, I learned how to do that, which will be very helpful for me in the future at college next year, so. And I thought it was just an overall good, fun thing to do, rather than just do assignments in class, because we all got to work together and there's a lot of really like fun discussions, like you wouldn't think they were fun if we just wrote it down on paper what we were doing, excuse me, what we were doing, but I don't know, we just like fed off of each other's ideas and it made us like, it made me feel like we were all like a really smart group of people and, I don't know, it was, it was fun and we got the results we wanted and it was a good process, so.
I think you are a really smart group of people.
That was a long explanation, sorry.
Yeah, I thought I'd say that. I actually had a conversation with one of my friends who's in AP Calc and AP Stats last year and I was telling her what we were doing and she was actually quite jealous because she was like, wow, that sounds like an awesome opportunity. And it really was, in terms of using the iPad and I finally mastered Survey Monkey and again, Google Drive and everything. But it also felt like a comprehensive learning experience because, I mean, calling parents during class, that was a terrifying experience and a learning experience. And actually, I ended up calling some Spanish-speaking households back and so I even felt like I was using other knowledge from other classes, so that's something that, sometimes in high school, you feel like some of your learning can be pointless and how I'm gonna apply this to real life, but I felt like I was going to class and I was actually participating in real life, so.
Yes, I, you know, appreciate how this class has helped reinforce what we've learned in this class and through other classes by doing the survey. It's brought stuff together and made a big picture view of what we've been learning.
I wanted to make a comment, sort of going back to the question about your personal experience with the iPad. Overall, thought it was good for me to have an iPad, but I will admit I have occasionally like used internet-based games in classes, but a comment on that is like, usually if I did that, it's because it was already zoning out of the board in any way, so if I had been gaming, I wouldn't have been paying much attention. And also, just in general, I think you'll continue to find like more loopholes to, to find, for example, like on, even on middle school mode, you burped on like, at sesamestrut.com and I think there's like downloading Pokemon and stuff, so there will be issues that we will continue to need to work on.
Addressing the Spanish-speaking part of that, we have several Spanish-speaking homes in our district, so to include them in the survey, we had a script written by Anna McWilliams in Spanish, so when we called someone who is a Spanish-speaking, from a Spanish-speaking home, we just said, you know, hablo español and like explained that and then had some week.
She gave us a script that said what to say if we didn't know Spanish.
Yeah, exactly. And then had Anna, had Anna, one of the people who are really good at Spanish call me back. So that's cool.
This class has kind of changed the way how I view any data I see like on the media or anything, just with, because you know, you are given data by someone, so you take it at face value. But through this class, I've learned the nuances of how data's collected and what to look for to know how it's collected and what information you're actually getting. So it's changed how I see data whenever I get any.
Again, just to go, just to go off what Emily said, I mean, I'm someone who are very like involved in politics and I'm very, you know, just intrigued with the whole political realm of everything. And so, you know, in politics, there's all these, you know, charts and statistics of, you know, whatever, to support whatever side. And it's just really taught me to look at those charts a lot more critically and to, you know, dig into what, you know, like where they're getting this data and all this stuff, you know. And actually, Elizabeth and I just did a research paper on, well, drones, but that's kind of irrelevant. And then one of those things, we had to look at charts, you know, of all, you know, different, you know, casualties, whatever, and we were able to like, you know, identify, you know, all the differences and just, you know, pick it out for.
Well, this is just terrific. And I think the amount of data that you presented to us and the short amount of time and the enthusiasm, it was, it was terrific. And I think will inform our policies and I'll work on the iPads too, so, thank you.
Thanks so much.